Good evening, everybody.
[laughter]
I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of April 25th, 2024 to order, and we can proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. So Dr. Terry Cutover, working with Police Chief Andy Mills, has brought the International Program Do the Right Thing to the Palm Springs area. The program recognizes each month youth in our community is setting example. Students recognized in this program are leading the Pledge of Allegiance at our council meetings. This week, we're proud to have Michaela Johnson, a senior at Palm Springs High School. Michaela Johnson is an exceptional student. Michaela's role as a peer counselor has effectively resolved student conflicts and promoted a communication among peers, inspiring others to follow suit. She is also the president of the Black Student Union and the cheerleading captain. She demonstrates exceptional leadership, teamwork, and school spirit. Michaela's active involvement in the key club showcases her dedication to community service. Despite her busy schedule, she has maintained a remarkable 4.0 GPA for two years, reflecting her academic prowess and work ethic. Michaela's aspiration to attend Norfolk University to pursue a bachelor's degree in business management underscores her ambition. Michaela also won the Student Award at this year's Black History Month, at this year's Black History Month Awards Gala. Michaela, would you like to lead us?
All who already rise, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We may be seated. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, City Clerk, if you have a roll call, please.
All members present.
Thank you. And now we have the following presentations. We are starting with our library renovation update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jeannie Kayes, Library Director, and I'm here with David Schne from Group Four Architecture. We are here tonight to present you an update of our renovation project, so I think Dave is going to start.
Thank you, Jeannie, and Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, esteemed council members. It's a privilege to be back before you again and to give you this update and get your input. So our agenda today is a quick recap, talk about our engagement, interior design, site design, infrastructure updates, and what our next steps are. So we're approximately 50% done with the design, so we're making excellent progress. The whole bottom of the slide talks about the engagement activities that we'll be summarizing in a little bit. When we were before you, in January 11th, we presented both the infrastructure scope, which has the initial funding of $13 million. Our credit, again, goes to the city for being successful in getting a very competitive grant from the state for your infrastructure, but your needs were so much greater than that. And we presented the broader vision for you, and with your unanimous support, we are moving forward with the design of the approximately $40 million project. And that's for the main library and the J.C. Frye Building. And I'll turn it back to Jeannie.
Okay, thank you. We want to talk about our library vision statement. I will say also, I'll pause here and say that all of these slides will be available on Engage Palm Springs, engagepalmsprings.com. This meeting is being recorded. It's on the city's YouTube channel, and you will be able to review all of the slides there too, so you can press pause and look at them closer. So for our library vision statement, Palm Springs Public Library stands as a beacon of lifelong learning and cultural enrichment, where society's diverse needs and aspirations converge seamlessly. It is a dynamic and inclusive space that serves as a cornerstone of community engagement, fostering meaningful connections. As we look toward tomorrow, we see our library as a state-of-the-art knowledge center that fosters collaboration, innovation, and civic engagement, providing a pathway to opportunity and enrichment for all. And we love this vision statement because it really defines what we're about to do at the library, you know, and we just want to make sure that everybody knows that this is going to be a great place for everybody. So our community engagement summary, we, in October, we did our first round of community engagement, and then recently, in March and April, we've done our second round, and we have received over 1,850 community responses so far through surveys and pop-up kiosks, events, and so on. And here are some examples of news articles that have promoted the event. Again, these will be available on Engage Palm Springs. You can go and look closer at the slides there. We did do a lot of outreach. We went to community businesses and apartment complexes. We sent emails to churches, the LGBTQ Center, and several different organizations to help them, ask them to help us promote our surveys. Here are some fun photos of our community engagement events. The neighborhood picnic was so crowded, we should not have had it inside a tent. It was a lot of fun. And then we did do, like I said, we did do several different engagement events at different places. We had a focus group with the Boys and Girls Club. We did lunch at Mizell and so on, so you can look at those more closely. So what did we, what responses did we get? We only collected demographic data and age data on our online survey, so I will say that in person, we did not gather that information. We wanted to keep it, keep it moving and make sure that people felt comfortable giving their input. So on, because the online survey is anonymous, the people responded, and here are our demographic background. It's not exactly matching the city of Palm Springs demographics, but I will say that in, in the city of Palm Springs, our, our rough demographics are about 62% white and 23% Hispanic and about 6% African-American, just to, to mention a few. On our online participants' age, as you know, Palm Springs has a lot of seniors, and we did see that reflected in our results, although we did have 22% from the ages of 18 to 55, so a little range of, of responses there. And where they lived, majority of the people did live in, full-time in the Coachella Valley. 83% respondents, respondents said that they lived in the Coachella Valley. We did get about 14% part-time, or visitors to participate, as you can see here. Now it's David's turn to go over the fun stuff.
Great, so what did we learn and how did it influence the project? So in our first round, we heard very clearly that the future library delivered today and tomorrow is going to focus on what Palm Springs is known for around the world, which is a, a city of culture and arts. Those were some of the top priorities, local culture, arts and crafts, language learning, local art gallery, children's play spaces. And so these translate specifically into the floor plans, which I'll go and show you shortly. In round two, we were asking the next level of detail, what, in the new types of spaces that we have, we have a create space and a make space. Library today is no longer just a place where you get the creative content of others, but it's a place you come to be able to tell your own stories, to do creative works of a variety, and we wanted to say with these state-of-the-art spaces, what were the actual activities that your residents would like to do when this opens? And so art classes and how-to classes, DIY, were top amongst those. And for the maker space, similarly, more industrial-type space, where you can really be messy and use tools and the rest, 3D printing and vinyl cutting and robotics and coding were some of the two top choices. And also, the library is so much more than just books, it's media, it's electronic collections as well. And also, for those who are not familiar, we have the LOT, the Library of Things, so you can borrow, it's all about the sharing economy. And we asked, what would people like to borrow from the library if they were here? And so gardening and seed libraries were amongst them. Children's toys was another topic that people like to hear, so it's just a very close third. And seed libraries and other aspects are, gardening and seeds are also very important. And so these, all of these activities are something that the spaces are fundamentally flexible, and the library, always listening to the community members, will be providing and adjusting these services to meet community interests. So now we'll go into what's this design going to look like. We gave you a little preview before, and now we have some additional renderings to share with you. So the library is a wonderful building at 37,000 square feet. It was designed in such a way that it is, has good bones and can be good for future generations. And so by having those good bones, it means we can sort of reinvent the interior of the building, and that's what we've done here. Based on the community input from round one and trends for state-of-the-art libraries, meeting spaces is very important, so we're, let's see, I think I can actually do here, the children's area in the southeast corner is an opportunity where, to expand the children's area. The technology area, because technology is sort of more mobile, it will be an expanded children's area, so the children will go to the northwest area. We'll have a variety of meeting rooms. We'll have four here within the sort of great central hall, and also have one in the children's area as well. And so then you have the make and create spaces to the north and south, and a dedicated teen area, and an expanded Friends of the Library area, who are very important, a quiet reading area as well. So we have all demographics happily coinciding in the same space, from quiet, and that's not just seniors who want quiet, it's often teens doing homework as well, to the creative spaces, all ages are represented here. So when we talked about it, the community wanted to say, well, what should the library look like? And we asked about three different themes, cool and fluid, colorful and lively, or warm and timeless. And Jeannie was, wanted to say, well, some people don't like to change at all. They say, it's just beautiful. And she says, well, then, go vote for your warm and timeless, because that's how we would characterize the existing building. And so we got really strong preferences for the cool and fluid, and that reflects the oasis character and the heat that we have here and wanting that. But we'll have a little bit of theme of all this throughout the library, and you'll see in the renderings here. So these were images that were shared with the public to give what inspiration for cool and fluid were in libraries and local inspirations. And here, and I'll share again, what some of the wonderful characteristics of your existing library by William Cody, 1975, I believe, it was opened up. And what you have is a building that we call desert modern. You come in, it sort of grows out of the desert landscape, it's low, you come through sort of shaded entries and boom, the open into an oasis in the middle. And the koi pond, which will, can never repeat enough, is being restored and will be here with the, the koi and plants and bubbling water again. So you have this lovely oasis in the library. It's one of the things that makes it so lovely, as you see here. And then you have the new study rooms being very, whoops, let's see, being, let's see, go back, I was pressing the wrong button. Let's see, there we go. So here on the right and the left are the new study rooms that very sensitively were put in, are being inserted into the building. We're really respecting and honoring the existing architecture and its historic qualities. So now going into the main reading room, looking up from the entries towards the back and where the children's area is, you can see the koi pond here and how the teens area is on your right, and just off the image to the right is the Friends of the Library bookstore. And so a close-up of what these four group study rooms will be, acoustically sealed off from the rest of the library. In hundreds of libraries we design and plan, we can never build enough of these spaces. They'll be very popular. And so then, we, in working with our historical consultant, Architectural Resources Group, they helped us recognize that in William Cody's original work and the landscape and other places, in addition to the strong rectangular geometry of the building itself, there were various curved elements. So for that cool and fluid aspect, we're really doubling down on that in the children's area and creating these sort of cloud-like forms in the ceiling, they're acoustic and having curved ceiling forms. And for the storytime area, which is where the teen area is today, creating these little seating niches against the wall. My design partner, Andrea Gifford, has got twins, six-year-olds, and they just love to, she really is well tuned to all ages, but those ages in particular, and bringing in skylights and having just a wonderful quality of light there. Okay, so hopefully you're liking this progress. We shared this with the steering committee last night, got rave reviews, some good constructive comments and questions. So then the site design is the opportunity where we think there's real opportunity to transform how the building sits in the city fabric and in Sunrise Park. So we're, of course, working with RIOS, the, who are the esteemed landscape architects who did your downtown park and the award-winning landscape there. They started with the analysis we shared before about sun, shadow, heat, and there's actually flooding issues historically in the past that we'll be addressing here. Their long-held need to expand the parking, the bright yellow in the right image is the expanded parking that will allow for ingress and egress from Sunrise Way. And then, again, we asked the community, how would you like to see the exterior develop? What theme would you like? And of the three themes, Oasis Retreat, Desert Modern, and Weaving of the Land, each one was illustrated with a variety of, of images and some text. Oasis Retreat comes out as the clear winner. And so here's a new image that shows perhaps this Oasis Retreat. This is the south entry facing sunrise. This was the original entry there, and it shows the Palos Verdes trees that are being added to it, the, the indigenous local palms being added here as well, creating shade. That had been abandoned as an entry originally because I think somebody might have had a heat stroke entering there. It was just blasting hot, and so creating shade is going to be important. And as we look at the ground plane in this beautiful rendering, we're getting rid of the grass, which is just not appropriate use of water in this context and going to native landscaping and just wonderful types of, variety of plants. And please don't ask me about which plant species there are, that's why we have landscape architects working with me. And so then we have a site plan here, which shows how the parking and the, the trees, the circles around the parking and around the courtyards, the, in blue squares of the various courtyards that we have. So RIOS is doing a fabulous job, really, developing this nicely. Some images on this are potentially beyond our budget, so we'll be doing some value engineering on this to make sure that when we come back to you at the end of this phase, the entire project is within the budget that we had specified before. So that's our obligation to the community, to make sure we can deliver this on budget. And so then, just a little close-ups in these nice views, that south courtyard, adding shade trees, some seating here, and this is the view out from the library out to sort of the courtyard and seeing the, the various trees at different heights. The children's courtyard is a fully enclosed area, tall, so you can come, your library experience is the indoor/outdoor on, on having more shade opportunities here. And if we can afford it, this new north courtyard is something that we're quite excited about as another place to also help increase the identity of the building from Baristo and Sunrise Way corner. So got the, give you the fun stuff first here. We led before on the infrastructure, and just very quickly, and for recap, for those who are just catching up on what the scope of this project is here, at the core of this is we're really renewing the whole building fundamentally for the next generations. At, at its age, all, everything has reached the end of its project At its age, all, everything has reached the end of its projected life, and so doing seismic upgrades to all-new lighting, air conditioning, and restrooms for sure, and all of that has to be accessible to the universal standards today, including restoring the exterior and the structural aspects, and new HVAC air conditioning systems. And so that concludes the fun part of the presentation. We had the steering committee meeting yesterday, we're here in front of you today. These dates are still to be confirmed with the city manager and your schedule going forward, but we expect to go to the steering committee one more time at the conclusion of this design development phase, at approximately 65% complete, and then come back to you with a, just a simple report again, that we're on track and on budget for it. So thank you.
Does council have any questions? Mayor Protem Darhart?
Yeah, thank you for that. Jeannie, you shared information about the demographics, the ethnicity.
Yes.
Is there more outreach scheduled?
For this phase, we, just this, yeah, our steering committee, we're expanding our, we expanded our steering committee to include more just different community groups and representatives, and we are going to expand the steering committee and bring them back. I don't, I don't know if we're planning, well, I will say, we have our friends meeting, our friends' annual meeting this Sunday, and it's a great opportunity for us to walk through the library and look at the renderings in their place to see what the future building looks like. So that's Sunday from 2 to 4, and...
I suspect that's primarily white and Caucasian.
For the, I'm sorry, for the what?
Individuals who are participating.
Well, I don't know. I mean, we have a variety of members in the friends group.
But I'm, in particular, looking at the Hispanic feedback, and based on the population, it seems like we, we might want to intentionally focus on the Latino community to get that specific feedback, because they're not really represented.
We did see a lot of Hispanic representation in our in-person events. We, we had over 400 people attend our Family Fun Fest. Every single event that we did, outreach event, we had bilingual staff present, and they were doing active translation, and every, all of our material was bilingual. I'm happy to do more if there's, if there's a specific area that you think I, that we need to go to, I'm happy to do it.
Well, it's just the, the online participation, which we're, we're just missing the voice of a big segment of the community. You know, so that would be my only concern on, on this step of the, of the process.
Any other questions? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. This is a presentation, but we can comment, right? Thank you. Thank you so much for your work on this, really beautiful presentation, it looks incredible. I'm really excited about this project. Congratulations to city staff for helping deliver and request this funding, state funding to be able to do this. So very much appreciate your work, I really like the designs. I had, I had flagged the same concern about how representation, just in engagement, both by age and also by race or ethnicity and language, because, you know, and I was just wondering, I know you do this as you run the current library, but just how to really engage folks so that we're hearing from them, especially because the kids outreach, that age group is, seems very small. I know you did some targeted kids outreach as well, right?
We did. We had a focus group with the Boys and Girls Club, and, and they came to the library, and we served pizza, it's very important to serve food. So we did have, we had about 19 teens, children and teens participate in that targeted focus group, and that was really good input. They actually trended the same on the results. It's, it's, yeah, I'm, that's the part I'm curious about, like, how are the trends? Are they similar? And they are very, showing very similar results no matter what, where we go, but, you know...
Koi pond?
Yeah, everybody's concerned about the koi pond. But the Family Fun Fest was really a really, that was a heavy family and teen, and heavy Hispanic, Latino community outreach that we did. And we put the boards right at the entrance, and we asked everybody that came through, and, and there was, there was a lot of translating happening at that. And so we, we really, and then we had the boards in the library at the front desk the entire, well, over two weeks. So we had them there, and then the, the fam, the picnic, the community picnic, we saw a lot of people. So it's tricky to say, did we do the outreach, and did we get the, the voices? I, I think we, I think we did in some ways, but we just didn't mark the information down.
Sounds like you did an incredible job. Are there still opportunities to participate for those people who are just learning about this now? How do they learn more about the project?
Engage Palm Springs is a wonderful resource. There's a whole page dedicated to the library renovation. There is a video that David recorded of the presentation, they can go watch the presentation. They can always reach out to us at the library if they'd like to give their, their input about the, the designs. So we're happy to talk to people about this.
Thank you. And then I think my only real comment or question, other than, I know you won't use this color, but I would not recommend light green for the toddler area, do not recommend as a mom of a toddler. But my main concern is shade, and so I know you're not the landscape architect, but you're saying shade, I'm seeing palm trees, I'm seeing mesquite and other things that don't lend a lot of shade, I'm seeing, I'm worried about like heat islands of expanding the parking and having so much more asphalt there. So that'll be, I think, the major concern, especially as we do these projects into the next 50 years, to really protect against shade in and out, and also around that. But I'm really excited about the use of the, all of the indoor/outdoor opportunities, and the, you know, if the, sorry, I'm blanking on the word, on the patios. That all looks really exciting, and it looks like a great project. So thank you for all of your work on this so far. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna, to go to councilmember, but I do say, because this project is so important, and it's so difficult to figure out the library of the future, I do want to encourage questions. I know it's a presentation, so councilmember Garner?
Thank you. It's a really exciting time. One thing about the parking lot, have you discussed, or is it possible to do solar panels across at the high school? They have solar panels, shade structures over the parking lot, and it would be really cool to just see more of that throughout our city, especially in larger parking lots like that, where you can't, it's not as easy to just put a tree and have good coverage.
And I would say that we, that it's not part of the scope of this project, but we would love to have covered parking at the library, so, and maybe as a more citywide solar plan. I'm not sure what, what the, the full city, city plan is for solar, but I know that we would, we would love to have solar parking, but it's not part of the scope of this project.
Got it. So that's for us to discuss at another time. Good to know, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have some. So you only did the online survey, it was only up 18 and older? Is that how you do it?
I think, did it?
No, I think it was all, anyone could fill it out, and all ages were queried.
Okay. One, one just suggestion is you do more is to ask whether people have kids too, if they're older, it's, it's sort of helpful to know that. I would also on Engage Palm Springs, I would make sure that you have a special, we can make sure whoever does a special feedback, questions or comments section.
Sure, we can do that.
That is dedicated, not just the general one, because I think this will be the first time a lot of people see it. I was also gonna ask, I know you've worked on a lot of libraries, if we could get some information, at least with council, on what other libraries that you think are really great examples in the rest of the country that you may have worked on or not have worked on? I know you showed a few at the last time.
And certainly we would, don't get me started, because I would, I love talking about libraries and giving virtual tours, and are happy to bring some back. And in our steering committee yesterday, there was talk about how much Rancho Mirage had, first there was the Palm Springs Library, which was the, the library in Coachella Valley. Then Rancho Mirage had eclipsed that in many people's minds. Well, we are really dedicated together to make sure that the Palm Springs Library is the best library in town, and we can look forward to in our end of DD to show you some examples that will reinforce that idea here.
Yeah, or even the interim, it's just helpful to see what other people are doing as we, as I look at this. You talked about technology, and is there a section like, that would be dead, on, I didn't see it in the, in the design, I think I missed it, whether it's technology or helping people understand AI, and is that planned or not?
That's, that's more of a programming feature, or what we would do with the building once it's done, but the, there will be computers throughout, the Wi-Fi's, all the technology's gonna be completely state-of-the-art. With our teen maker space and our create rooms, those will be great places to offer computer classes. We've had lectures at the library about AI already, and it's here, and we're, we're excited, we've got our, we've got robotics programs at the library. So we do a lot now. Once we get the space, it'll be even more, and, and that'll be programmatic, that we would address that once the building is built.
Great, great. So there's sort of, it's adaptable then, depending on, I think, you know, you mentioned that in the beginning. So I know I'm asking some of the same questions, but this is very exciting, and so I know there's a lot of interest. And your steering committee, can you just tell me generally the makeup of that steering committee?
Sure.
As it represents?
So of course, we have representatives from the trustees, the library board of trustees, the friends, the foundation, but we've got representatives from the myself, senior center, we've got our partners, Boys and Girls Club, we've got the high school librarian, we've got another representative from the school district. We have parents now, you know, parents, friends of the library who are also parents, and community members who have small children. We have a futurist on there now, trying to think of the city staff, but we were up to, I think, we're about 27 people now, so our room is full.
Okay, good, but they're engaged.
Very much so, yeah, great group.
That's, that's terrific. And you didn't talk about the J.C. Frye Building at all in this, did you show that?
It is, it's going to happen, it's just not as pretty.
Full renovation of the building, all its infrastructure is there, and it's mostly for the friends and the foundation, and the archive as well.
Okay, yeah, it'd be good to understand that, that use of it. So, I mean, I think this is exciting, I would very much to see what the other libraries, I would love, I would love our library to be, you know, world-class, and Palm Springs is used to being very progressive and at the forefront, and I would love it to have a library that other cities look at and say, oh, this is what the library of the future is.
And I'll, I'll rave about group four, they, Loma Linda was one of the libraries that you worked on, right? So, Loma, Loma Linda.
Okay.
Is that right?
I'm not sure which one you're thinking.
I'm thinking of the wrong town.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Your Belinda. Your Belinda. Now I know what you're talking about, yes.
Your Belinda.
In Orange County, yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, find all the libraries you did and make sure ours is the best.
Absolutely.
They've done about 500.
Oh, okay, terrific. All right, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we have a presentation from our fire department. Wildfire mitigation.
Well, we've seen the devastation caused by wildfires in our state and across the nation, most notably in 2023 Maui, over 100 lives lost, 2,000 residents lost, and some historic sites. The worst part, much of that could have been prevented through some mitigation efforts. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I'm Paul Alvarado, Palm Springs Fire Chief. I have with me Taylor Teepel, our fire marshal, and I'd like to share with you our plan for mitigating those brush fire hazards here in the city of Palm Springs. So brush clearance by the numbers. Here within the city of Palm Springs, 1,299 total lots are located within the very high fire severity zone, and that was designated by the state in 2015 and adopted here in Palm Springs in 2019. Of those 1,299, 1,254 lots are residential. 27 lots are city-owned, and that equals about 87 acres. And then 18 of those lots are owned by outside agencies that have jurisdiction over that other than the Palm Springs Fire Department. Next slide. So this map looks familiar, as we adopted the mitigation, mitigation hazard plan for the city, the parts that are colored on the map are within our very high fire severity zone, and most notably on the west side of the city and on the south side. And what we've done is we've actually labeled this, so we can see who has ownership and which parts of these lots fall in with the residential areas. The letter A on the west side, if you look at that, this are the neighborhoods like Parkview South, the Mesa, Historic Tennis Club, and other neighborhoods within those areas. The letter B, which is up on the north part of the city, those are city-owned lots, Little Tuscany, Vista Las Palmas, and Old Las Palmas neighborhoods. The letter C, right in the middle on the west side, that's the mountainous lots, if those run all the way up into the San Jacinto Mountains. So many people ask the fire department, well, how are you gonna get up in those mountains? And those aren't the areas that we're typically considered or concerned with. We're worried about the homes that are right within those areas that are highlighted. Letter D on the south part, just south of the airport, we've identified some of those agencies that have jurisdiction over that. D1, Riverside County Flood Control, D2, Bureau of Indian Affairs, D3, Department of Interior, D4, Bureau of Land Management, and D5, Desert Water Agency. And we've reached out to all those agencies. We've shared our plan this year, our mitigation efforts, and we've asked for their response as well. We want to make sure we're partnering, we're working together. And the letter E, which is right in the center of the city, these are vacant lots that fall outside of our very high fire severity zone. These are areas such as the Prescott, Prescott Preserve and Whitewater Club, and a lot of its responsibility is gonna fall within our code enforcement, co-compliance department to ensure those areas are cleaned up, of course, with the partnership of the fire department. Next slide. So Appendix S, this is actually what we show when we're out engaging with our neighborhood, our residents. This is something we'll share with them when we're educating them on what we're expecting for the homeowner to do on their very own lots. Number one will show us areas within 200 feet of the structure need to be cleared, as well as 10 feet from any kind of combustible fence and roadway. We want to make sure that the grass is cut to three inches in height, as well as any shrubs. Now, if the shrubs are spaced out greater than 18 feet apart, we're not concerned about that. We just want to make sure they're limbed up from the ground so the fire can't easily spread. Number two, you'll see that's by a tree on the, on that, on this picture. So trees that are taller than eight feet, we want to make sure that they're limbed up from the bottom, up to six feet. That way, any kind of fire that has spread under the grass doesn't reach into the trees. Number three, we want to make sure trees are no closer than 10 feet from the outlet of a chimney on any house. Number four, that's looking right on one of the residential structures there. We want to make sure that the roof is free from any leaves or any type of combustible material, and make sure that any overhanging trees are cleared up. Next slide. So this gives an example here. On the left side, you'll see what a residential home looked like, 200 feet from the structure and 10 feet from the roadway. On the left, this is before we educated and helped the homeowner on what the expectations are in Appendix S. On the right side, you'll see after. So you see the gla, the grass is cleared up from the roadway, there's still, the native brush is still in place, but it's been cleaned up, any kind of dead foliage has been removed, and you'll see the trees have been cleaned up as well. And if you look closer to the home, all the grass within 200 feet has been cleared out. Now, we're making sure we're not clearing down to the ground soil, because we're worried about debris flow during rain as well, and we don't want to increase any of the dust hazard that we see during high wind events here in the city. Next slide. Well, the question comes to, after we're educating the neighbors on their residence, they ask, well, what is the city doing? I live right across the street in Little Tuscan neighborhood, and the city lots aren't being mitigated. So last year in 2023, we started our first efforts on clearing these lots. Next slide. So before and after on a city lot, this city lot is located in the Little Tuscan neighborhood on the left side, you'll see where the grass and vegetation is grown between the rocks, and after our efforts on the right side, you'll see where it's been cleared, and this is from the roadway and 200 feet from any structure within that neighborhood, and these are city-owned lots here. Next slide. The strategy moving forward, it's a two-pronged approach for the fire department. The first prong, inspection and education. The short-term plan is we're coordinating with our co-compliance department, they're gonna let us borrow two of their inspectors to do some of this work that we just showed... They're going to let us borrow two of their inspectors to do some of this work that we just showed in the city owned lots within the very high fire severity zone. We'll make sure that we're educating all the residents in that neighborhood and what the expectations are for them. The brush removal labor is another prong. In the short term immediate plan, we have SoCal land maintenance that will start on May 1st, clearing lots within our city owned area, making sure that we're clearing all the grass and vegetation. The long term plan is we have a request proposal out, and we're going to move that body of work into the fire department. No longer will the public works department be managing that, but the fire department will be managing this on an annual basis. So just a just a final thought from me from the fire chief, you know, no plan is 100%. It's going to take all of us working together, all the city departments as well as our neighborhoods. But I tell you, I've seen this community come together, especially during Tropical Storm Hillary and the efforts that we did together. I have 100% confidence in this community of us coming together and ensuring we keep this community safe from any type of wildfire hazard. Next slide. That's the end of our short presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could just add a couple statements before we get into questions. First of all, I want to thank the fire chief for getting out ahead of this. They took a proactive approach last year during this time. We know when we get into the fall season, all that brush is going to dry and it's going to be fuel for wildfire season. So we're trying to get out ahead of it as the chief indicated. It's kind of a two-part process of doing a lot of education. And I really want to give a little bit of a shout out and thanks to both of our to our HR department, Stephanie George, and also to Veronica Goodheart in our special program compliance, trying to figure out where can we free up some extra staff to do some additional coding code compliance? Because as you heard the chief say, we've got more than 1,200 parcels, private sector parcels. How do we get out there to educate everybody, all of those 1,200 parcels? So we're going to, we've got this short term strategy of dealing with our city owned parcels that are out there and trying to make sure we're doing our part. But how do we educate? And when you've got 1,200 parcels, that's a lot of people to reach out to. And we want to, we want to be out there. You've seen some of these photos doing some of the abatement. It's hard work, you know, you've got to get out there. You can't just, you know, plow stuff up. You got to worry about dust. But at the same time, you've got a lot of hard hand work to do to get out there clean around rocks and boulders and everything else. So, you know, compliments to them. We're going to get started on this this summer. A lot of education to our residents and, you know, we're trying to get going in the right direction here.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Councilmember Middleton?
Chief, thank you. We really appreciate the work that's going in here. In terms of the outreach to residents and to homeowners, is that by email? Is it personal, face to face? Is it phone calls? Explain how you're interacting with people.
Absolutely. I'll give you a little information, but I'm actually going to turn this over to our fire marshal, who has been a part of this process since the city has adopted this ordinance. But I'll tell you, most recently, last year, we only accomplished 70 of those inspections out of those 1,299. And that was really prompted when those homes are sold. Part of that sale of those properties is a requirement to be inspected by the fire department to ensure they're clear in that very high fire zone. But I'll pass this over to our fire marshal to add to that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton, great question. So we're doing a lot of the above. So we're doing emails. We're doing knock and talks. We're doing Engage Palm Springs. We're doing a lot of everything. So like chief was saying, we're going to be borrowing code enforcement officers in their interim. So a lot of it is door knocks because some of these could be snowbirds, vacation rentals, vacant property. So a lot of it is, a lot of, I'd say about 80% of it is researching the property owner and getting a hold of them.
So that's, that's a very intense activity. Do we have personnel to be able to get out to 1,299?
And while Councilmember Middleton, just to also kind of make sure we're clarifying, we're not using any code enforcement officers that are already fit positions that are filled and doing code enforcement work in our neighborhoods. These are vacant funded positions that we've been trying to get filled. We're expediting the work of that. We we think we're going to be able to fill those positions real quickly. And in the short term, we want to dedicate both of those two individuals to helping our fire department out with this work.
Very good.
I couldn't have said it better. Thank you, Mr. Styles.
All right. So there are 18 lots that you've identified here that are owned by outside agencies. What's the extent of cooperation that we're receiving from those agencies? And how are we interacting with them to define the issues that we see and to gain their cooperation?
I'll tell you my experience just yesterday at the Aua Kalente confab they put on for all first responders, both police and fire agencies. The BIA actually had a couple of their mitigation specialists there. And so really, for the first time, they haven't done much of this fuel mitigation in the past. But it's important that we're working together for the first time. They're actually putting out some work to get that done this coming fire season. So it hasn't been an effort that's really been very strong in this community. But we've reached out to people that are addressing the wash Riverside County. And I tell you, the responses back to our fire marshal have been quick. They're looking to see what we're doing and what we need. So it's very important that we're communicating. My expectation is they're, you know, they're they're doing just as much as we are.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you both, and thanks to everyone on your staff.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you for having me here.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, thank you. So the outreach just seems like it's going to be a huge challenge to me. So do we, is there a component that's including social media, public education, broadcast media? Is that built in? And do we have a budget for that?
Yeah, it has to be really a wraparound approach for this. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem, you're exactly correct on that. We've been doing social media on this since we started our brush mitigation last year. We're going to continue that. We're working with our public information officer, Amy Blaisdale. When we launch this May 1st, when we start clearing those city lots, our plan is to have a media event that day. And to really just tell them what our expectations are, what we're doing, the responsibility on the homeowner is what the city's doing. But this has to be an ongoing effort. So approaching all aspects of communication, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And those 1,299, it's being done in other jurisdictions. It's not impossible. You know, so when you look at it by the numbers, if we're getting out there every day and touching at least five or six of those residents, you know, over a year long period, we're going to touch every single one of them. A lot of them are going to require reinspection. As the fire marshal said, you know, some of these aren't full time homes. So that's where the trouble comes in when we're doing multiple inspections. But if everything goes well, we're going to get every single one within a year.
Mm hmm. And where are you getting the money to fund the public education?
That's just internally. You know, that's internally within our own public information officer with the city's PIO.
Okay.
Reaching out to our contacts here within the media, television and radio. You know, that's the way we're approaching it right now.
Yeah, excellent. So you got what you need. So a question, page eight, the strategy. You talked about how the department is going to take over the administration of the contract with the RFP that's going to go out instead of public works.
That's correct.
So is this going to be for all high danger areas in the future or just city owned lots?
So that mitigation is going to be for city owned lots within the very high fire severity zone. So that's where we actually have the responsibility to actually clear those lots. So that currently, we work through public works through their contract. And as those funds are available, we're working with them. But that fund is also being used all across the city. So as we found this past year, those funds have run out, and then our efforts stop here within the fire department. So much better for me to manage that budget, make sure that we have that across the year at the time that we need it. You know, especially right now, after we've had the rain, an unseasonable amount of rain. From year to date, we've had as much rain as we typically have over an entire year. So it's real important for me, my staff to, as we're watching the rain, put those efforts in place and just have total control over that.
So does public, what will public works continue to, or what do they currently do on non-city property?
So code enforcement will be working with public works on those areas, like the Prescott Preserve that we talked about. So those those complaints or concerns from the community may come to the fire department. But through our communication with code code compliance, they'll reach out to public works and work to get those either the landowner doing it, or perhaps they come in with public works and do some of that clearing as well.
Yeah, okay. All right, excellent. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks for getting the jump on it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the support here. Thank you very much. You know what? And I tell you, it means a lot to me to be the fire chief here and have such support from city leadership and the council and mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the great presentation. Thank both of you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, next I wanted to mention a couple proclamations that were done recently. We, there's a proclamation for Brian Ellis, who was honored on April 17th, 2024 with the 468th Walk of the Stars for his commitment to the full service restaurant industry, notably his 48-year tenure at Melvins, along with his significant contributions to its celebrated and enduring success, as well as Brian's unwavering commitment to philanthropy. We also did a presentation for Desert Regional Medical Center, who celebrated the completion of a 4.5 million renovation and technology upgrade to its cardiac suite and investment in new technology that provides life-saving treatments for residents and visitors of the Coachella Valley. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda. May amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items to be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items the staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and or a vote? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am just going to note recusal for item 1D, a request by AG Land Investments. So I've talked to the city attorney. I don't need to leave the room. And I'll just recuse in the overall vote for all of the items.
Correct, correct. And that's because your husband is part of the LLC that is the applicant.
I think you said that better than I would have.
Okay, anything else? Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Rhonda Hart.
Not to pull, but to comment on E and D.
E and D. I don't think it's. Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem, a second, eh? And it passes 5-0. Did you want to, can he comment on one? You can comment on 1D. Want to do that later? Hold on. Okay. At this time, I invite the city attorney, Jeff Ballinger, to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. The city council met in closed session to discuss the three items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Okay, the next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing. And general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's written comment that you wish to distribute to the city council members, please hand it to the city clerk. The first speaker is Russ Uthe, followed by Joe Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, supporting staff. It's hell getting old. You don't move as fast, so stay young. For the record, my name is Russ Uthe. I'm chairman of Sonora Sunrise. And I say in front of you tonight to thank you for, a year ago, you approved our request for stop sign on Cerritos and Mystique. And it cut down the traffic. It didn't eliminate everything. We've had no reported accidents, so it's been successful. Tonight, I appear before you because we have two other requests for stop signs for the same thing, except some of those, that one of them is more severe because they've had hospitalization and emergency squads out there on some. Farrell is a speedway. It has been. We needed to slow down and control the traffic. So while I don't represent anybody else other than Sonora Sunrise, I stand with them because we've had meetings together to work as a group to bring together. And it is an indication that one PS is alive. So I respectfully request that the city council will approve our request for two stop signs. One at Cerritos and Mystique, and the other one, I can't remember where that one is, but it's close in the same thing. But it's dealing with traffic and flow. So I appreciate if you will plead to you to to support it and approve it tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and city staff. I am Joe Jackson, a 12-year resident of Palm Springs in District 4 and the current chair of the Los Compadres Neighborhood Organization. And I join with my colleague Russ Uthe from Sonora Sunrise. We are neighboring neighborhood organizations with Farrell as our border. And we are both supporting Agenda Item 3A, the intersection safety improvements at Farrell and Sonora, which I know Councilmember Holstich is very familiar with with that neighborhood. This project has been a long time, this intersection has been a long time concern of our neighbors in Los Compadres. We are a child friendly, pet friendly, walking kind of neighborhood. And it's very difficult to cross this intersection. With the speeds on Farrell and the curve just north of this intersection, it is almost impossible for any person to get across the intersection, even a fast walker, let alone a person with a child, a pet, or a person with disabilities. So this improvement would slow traffic on Farrell and make for a much safer pedestrian experience. A couple of years ago, this solution was brought to the intersection of Sonora and El Cielo, also in Los Compadres, with a very effective result. And so we simply ask that you do it again. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Naomi Soto.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. Similar with my neighbors, I just want to express my excitement to see some traffic calming work happening in these neighborhoods. The only thing I just wanted to add is the urgency of this. The traffic that's happening on Ramon this year is really expediting all extra vehicles down Ramon, down El Cielo. Like all of these streets that we're talking about, we're even seeing more than we normally see about a year or two. And so I know it takes a long time to get some of these things going. But if there's anything we can do to kind of move this up or just kind of really flag the urgency, there's a lot of traffic on these roads this year, and it's probably going to be like that until Christmas. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments, City Clerk?
No further speakers.
Okay. The next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar with Councilmember Holstich recusing from item 1D. I should also say amendments were made to the meeting minutes of April 11th. The names of the team impact members who received commendations were added. And the title of item number 3A was revised. The revised meeting minutes are available to the public online under agenda, additional agenda materials. Motion passes 5-0. With the acceptance of item 1I, the city clerk will now read the title only.
In ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending section 1637005 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to signage regarding regulatory measures applicable to the transportation network companies.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, you wanted to comment on item 1D and 1E?
Thank you. On item 1E, just to comment on, we, we want to continue to reinforce that we're an arts and culture city. And I just want to point out that here we have a business that was offering to paint art on their building. And they submitted an application sometime in December. And it's today coming to council. So I'm wondering if there's any way we can streamline the process for businesses that. the process for businesses that... Or organizations that want to do murals or other art within the city, so it doesn't take as long as this one did. And it's not saying that there's anything wrong with the people involved in the process. I'm just saying, how do we encourage more businesses to, you know, present art on their buildings with the notation that they were ready with their artists to paint this mural on January 17? So, it just shows that it just takes a long time. And government takes a long time, and I know that. But if I could just encourage... If there's an opportunity that we can look at having a streamlined process when someone wants to do a city art project, that would be appreciated. And Item 1D, my question on 1D is just... I just want to make sure that... That what is being presented to us is normal and customary, and the process that we followed was the normal and customary process. And I'm told from our staff that it was, and the process that was followed for this applicant is the same as we would have followed for any other applicant.
So, just to clarify, Councilmember Holstich has recused, but we've already voted on this?
Yeah, if there's going to be a discussion, it would be appropriate.
I don't need any more.
You asked a question.
No, no. I got an answer already from staff, so I just wanted to share that the question was asked, and my comment is that this applicant has been processed through our channels as any other applicant would have been processed and reviewed.
Yeah, that's correct. I think the question that we received in advance of the meeting was if it's normal that we receive an application for a subdivision that doesn't include architecture. Under the city's regulations and laws, we do allow only subdivision maps to be processed as an application without seeing the architecture or above-ground development. So, that was a... This application did go through that process, did receive approval at a hearing. And so, what was before you this evening was an extension of that map. The final map, once it's finished and through the internal processes with staff, will come before the council at a future time.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Told Councilmember Holstich she can come back. The next item is 2A. It's an application by Jane London, represented by the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation for historic designation of the MH Artician Building, located at 120 West Arenas Road, Case HSPB Number 147, APN 513143006. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. David Newell, Assistant Planning Director. This item is the first of two public hearing items for historic nominations. As you've read in the staff report for this application, staff found that changes made over time to this site and building have resulted in the loss of the building's original design integrity that was first designed by William Cody. And thus was the reason for not recommending the historic nomination to the HSPB. Staff's recommendation was on the basis of maintaining what the ordinance identifies as exceptional historic resources. And due to the loss of many of the building's important features, believe that the building didn't qualify as exceptional. However, that being said, you do have a report that was prepared describing why the property merits nomination, and the HSPB did conclude that the property did meet criteria necessary for a Class 2 nomination. Historic Preservation Officer Sarah Yun will be presenting the application and describing this in further detail, and we're both available to answer your questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and members of the city council. For the record, Sarah Yun, Historic Preservation Officer and Associate Planner for the city of Palm Springs. As David has introduced, the application before you today is for a commercial building known as the Artician, addressed 120 South Arenas Road. Here's an aerial map of the site on the left, showing the building footprint and the tops of the canopy that extend over the adjacent sidewalks, located at the corner lot of the central business district. The request for historic designation was submitted by the owner. The two-story building was constructed as a mixed-use structure with commercial use on the ground floor and a penthouse on the upper level. The building was designed by the renowned architect William F. Cody during the post-World War II period in 1950. The rendering and the historic photos shown give us a good depiction of the character-defining qualities of the building, and Cody's design placed a strong emphasis on the horizontality of the form, the use of natural materials, and a glass storefront facade that zigzagged in and out of the sidewalk. Stone-clad walls and planter beds were also used to create an additional level of articulation. The original design also had an open-air courtyard that was eventually enclosed, and various exterior changes were made throughout the 80s and 90s. And this led to the many alterations that changed a lot of the original design features. Here are some photos of the existing conditions of the site today. The image on the left was taken from West Arenas Road, and the photo on the right was taken from South Palm Canyon Drive. The storefront along South Palm Canyon has been replaced with a conventional storefront, glass storefront window, as well as the storefront along Arenas. You see that the parallel... The storefronts are now parallel to the sidewalk with no articulation, and the storefront windows along Arenas, for the most part, have been straightened out, minus a few articulating planters that remain. To better demonstrate the changes that were shown, this diagram was created to show the original sawtooth storefront walls, planters, and display windows. The planters and walls that connect the inside and outside spaces together have been reduced to two locations, and the display cases shown in orange on the left have been removed. And the plans indicate that there were a variety of paving materials that no longer exist. And of course, one of the more noticeable changes was the enclosure of the open-air courtyard, which are now office spaces. When we take a moment back to look at the Historic Preservation Ordinance language, it differentiates between Class 1 and Class 2 sites. When a property receives Class 1 designation, it is recognized as a site that meets criteria as well as retaining a higher level of integrity. A Class 2 site is defined as a site that is also considered historic, yet does not meet the integrity findings. Both levels of designation are eligible to apply for the Mills Act incentive. And as far as the Mills Act program is concerned, it is an economic incentive that may be awarded by city council to historic property owners when they agree to enter into a contract that outlines projects that will actively restore and maintain the historic properties and their character-defining features. When evaluating a project for historic designation, the ordinance states that the project must exhibit historic significance by meeting at least one of the stated criteria in Section 8.05.070(c)(1A) and the integrity findings, if it wishes to obtain Class 1 status. While staff was unable to make the initial findings for historic designation due to the unsympathetic alterations explained in the previous slides in the staff report, particularly to the storefront facades, HSPB evaluated the project and had differing results. HSPB found that the project meets criteria on 3 and 5 as a building that still exemplifies a particular period of local history and architectural style and is recognized as a commercial project by architect William Cody in its current condition. The HSPB findings are detailed in Exhibit B, which is the draft resolution that's presented before city council by the board. When it comes to the integrity findings, staff and HSPB agree that the alterations have impacted many aspects of the integrity and do not meet many aspects of the integrity standards. This means at best, the project could only qualify for a Class 2 site if it meets one or more of the criteria in Section A. With the original design intent in mind, the following list of character-defining features are identified. It was important to note that some of these features have been significantly altered, yet important to call out for possible future restoration purposes. Continuing on is another list of character-defining features. The original design, again, placed emphasis on the treatment of the storefront glazing, the sawtooth footprint, and the natural materials such as stone and redwood siding that was critical for the design. There is no doubt that the building was designed with intent by the architect, and it was also quite clear that many alterations of the exterior of the building have been made over time. While staff takes the position that the exterior alterations were impactful enough to make it difficult to make the findings for designation at this time, the HSPB finds that the building still tells the story of the commercial development of Palm Springs and that it still retains enough character-defining features to be representative of Cody's work. Therefore, reclassification as a Class 2 historic site was recommended. And as an owner-initiated application, they are also in support of HSPB's recommendation for Class 2. I would like to add that it was a challenging project to evaluate, and no two projects are alike. We review each project carefully, analyzing each criteria to determine if resources rise to the occasion of being protected for its historic significance. We're also conscious making sure that the integrity of our inventory of designated sites maintains a high and consistent standard. With that, I'd like to conclude the presentation and also make a quick mention that the applicant representative, Stephen Kealan, is joining the meeting virtually today.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Mayor Protem?
I usually agree 100% with HSPB because of the analysis and work that they put in is always excellent. And staff's work is always excellent. And you always bring very well-thought-out and reasoned research and background. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your presentation this morning. I fully agree with staff. The exterior... Oh, sorry.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. A question is... Is... When a designation is made, whether it's 1 or 2, can that be made with an idea or thought or wish that the remodeling is going to be done to bring it back to its original classification or original design?
That's usually not conditioned as part of the designation process. However, the Mills Act contracts are designed to provide an incentive for historic property owners to have that funding to help them restore projects. So, that would probably be an area where we would review the application and see if their capital improvements list include restoration of original features.
Okay. And that's not part of what the applicant brought forward?
Correct. It's an application for historic designation.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of your work on this. I agree you do excellent work as the team, so we very much appreciate that. Can you just remind me and the public the difference between Class 1 and Class 2 in terms of restrictions on redevelopment or other changes? I know we had worked on the ordinance for changes for those types of properties.
In terms of the review for Class 1 and Class 2 properties for development, they go through the same process. Any changes, exterior changes made to designated properties require a certificate of appropriateness. We would evaluate if that scope of work is qualified as a major or a minor, and that would determine the review agency, if it could be approved at a staff level or if it needs to go to a board. But the review criteria are also the same.
So, the process is the same for either Class 1 or Class 2? Because I remember some were staff approvals and some were board approvals. So, that's that determination.
Correct. It's determined by the scope of if it is a minor or a major application.
Thank you. So, you had outlined those key differences between 1 and 2 status already in your presentation? There's no other differences?
No. Those are the only two that we would consider historic properties.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I have a question. So, there's tax benefits to getting the historic designation?
The tax benefits are not by right, and it's associated with the Mills Act contract, and only designated properties have the ability or are eligible to apply for the Mills Act contract. And that incentive is to provide a discount on your property taxes with the intention that that money gets funneled back into the project for restoration or maintenance of the historic resource.
And can that be required?
It cannot be required.
Okay. And has the applicant, who also owns the building, indicated that they have any intention of restoring it, to your knowledge?
I would defer to the applicant representative. I don't want to misspeak. I believe Stephen Kealan is available.
Okay. Okay. And I have just a couple... But the... Once it's designated, it can't... Any future ones have to go through the review, and the building can't be destroyed or...
Correct. Once it's designated, it would have to go through a level of design review with either staff or the board for any exterior alterations.
Okay. All right. Is there still a residential penthouse there?
No, there is not.
No?
There are office spaces on the upper level now.
Okay. I'm dying to... If Stephen was here, I would be... Wanted to ask him why this necklace sold for 27 million. I read this report. It's a fascinating report that they said was a fake or overvalued. Okay. So, I can't ask him that. But, okay, at this... If there's no more questions, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. Do we have any speakers?
No speakers for 2A.
And the applicant is not here to speak either, or represent?
He's not online.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Now, you can go. Mayor Protem?
Well, now you know what I was already saying. So, it's... My concern with even putting any designation on it is so much has changed on this from when the building was first built. And I think it's just too much. And unless... I would like to see the owner bring it, restore it back into its original condition or close to it, and then go through the process with HSPB to get that Class 1 or Class 2 designation. So, I have a difficult time, and I'm challenged with approving something today with an idea that we're going to incentivize an owner to make the restorations that would bring it back to its 1950 luster.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, I actually, I do... I would have liked to see the owner committed to doing something to restore it. They actually originally wanted it Class 1 historic, right?
So, in terms of our application process today, most applications will come in as a Class 1 request. And then, based on the analysis, it will determine if it qualifies for a Class 1 or a Class 2. At the original HSPB hearing, the applicant did make note that that process required them to submit for an application for Class 1.
Okay.
But they were comfortable with the Class 2 request or Class 2 designation recommendation by HSPB.
Okay. That said, I, you know, I agree with Mayor Protem, but also, this would now protect any future changes or demolition of the building.
That's correct.
And so, personally, for that reason, you know, I would... I will support this because I would hate to see the building destroyed. this because I would hate to see the building destroyed, and I do hope that the applicant actually restores it. But if it's not made Class I or II, it could potentially be totally torn down and something else built. Is that correct?
If it's not designated a Class I or II site, then it would, I think that is correct because typically we have a process for Class IIs and IIs, anything built before '78 to go before the board. But since it has gone to the board and if it doesn't receive a designation, then I don't believe we have a path.
Okay. Councilmember Hostage, yes?
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that because I remember when we passed that ordinance. So can you explain that a little bit more? So it's one bite at the apple and decided it wouldn't be the plans that are being brought forward to demolish the building that would go in front of the board? Really hard hypothetical question to just grill you with. But yeah, I'm interested to know that because I think my interpretation as a policymaker passing that policy was that any demolition would go forward, and that's why we had, to the board or to staff for review, and that's why we passed that protection, and that bringing it forward this once when it might not qualify wouldn't foreclose the protections against demolition of a potentially historic building, knowing that the integrity might need to be improved or, you know, it might need to be, what's the word we're supposed to say instead of renovated? Restored. Thank you. Restored. Sorry, my brain is slow this evening. Restored to the level that it might need to, to be Class I or Class II.
I'm trying to play that process because you're correct because the ordinance does provide a level of protection in terms of a full demolition, which would require it to come back to HSPB. So they would see that application based on the ordinance language, just trying to play out because typically the HSPB only have two choices. They either allow for the demolition to continue, stating that the building has no significance, or they would put a stay of demolition and start the historic preservation proceedings. And so that's where it's a, it's a little bit of a catch-22 there because they've gone forward with that.
That might be the first time that this has happened under this ordinance, perhaps.
That may be the case since it's a fairly new edit from 2019.
Councilmember Middleton, give.
I think all of us are struggling with this one, and I know I am. And without hearing from the owners as to what their intentions are and what their plans are to bring this building closer to what its original structure is, I'm struggling to be able to justify a vote tonight. But I would be open to tabling this for a period of two to four weeks to give the owners an opportunity to describe to us what their plans are and help convince us that this does deserve Class II status. And I think Class II is achievable on this building, but I think HSPB, without trying to put words in their mouth, were fighting that same struggle that this, there's just been too much work done on the building that does not conform to the original inspiration of Mr. Cody.
I mean, I agree. I would hate to see demolition or further destruction of what the character-defining features are, but I agree that we should, we should table this until we could hear from the owner as to what their, if they actually intend to restore it, because that would certainly sway my mind in terms of doing this. Do we have?
So my motion would be to table for up to two meetings to give the owner an opportunity to come back and present to us what their intentions are for the building.
So is the city attorney, is there, can we condition, say, okay, we're going to put it on the table for four weeks and it's going to come back? And the owner says, oh, yes, I'm going to redesign, I'm going to retrofit, and I'm going to make it look like it looked in 1950. There's nothing requiring that person to do that.
I'm not familiar with anything in our code. We can certainly look into that, but not off the top of my head, no.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure, if we can't condition it, we're going to do something on a wish and a hope, and I don't, I don't think that's right. So, and do I understand properly that a building can't get demolished unless it comes back to City Hall for approval to be demolished? Is that correct? That's the way I'm understanding it.
Yes. So the way the ordinance is written today, any Class III or IV building that require, that is requesting a full scrape would have to go before the Historic Sites Preservation Board to be reviewed to see if it has historic status worth reclassifying the building.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, I think part of the concern I'm hearing from the mayor is that the concern that it could be demolished if they don't get this.
Or further, further, you know, if the character-defining features could further be removed. So it would actually matter, I mean, help my decision because I would hate to go against staff, but I, but I, you know, I know the HSPB does great work, but if this, if this owner has a convincing intent, whether or not we can hold them to it, that they are going to try and restore it, or at least may, you know, do that, then that would actually sway my opinion in terms of it, because I would hate to see the building further, further altered.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate the Mayor Protem's comments about a wish and a hope, but the question in my mind will be the ability of the owner to convince us that they have concrete plans to move forward.
Okay. Well, I'm going to second your motion to table this for up to two meetings.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, on a procedural point, because this is a public hearing item, what I would recommend is that you continue it to a date certain. In this case, that would be to the May 23 meeting. That way, we do not need to renotice the item based on the fact that we haven't had any public comment here this evening, but we would request that the applicant come before City Council on the 23rd, and so I make that recommendation to you, if I might.
Thank you. I accept that as the maker of the motion.
Okay. So we will continue this until May 23?
It would be appropriate to take a vote and also to continue the public hearing.
We have a motion in a second.
We need a motion in a second.
Councilmember Middleton and I, motion, made the motion and I seconded it. And it passes. So this is continued to a date certain of May 23. Thank you very much, Sarah and David. The next item is Item 2B, an application by the Country Club Estates of Palm Springs Homeowners Association, represented by the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation for Historic District Designation of Country Club Estates located at South Camino Royale and East Laverne Way, Case HSPB 145 HD 9 APN 511 150 031. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. The next project that is before you all today is a request for historic district designation of the condominium complex Country Club Estates located at the northwest corner of South Camino Royale and East Laverne Way. This condominium complex was constructed in 1965 as a 30-unit condominium complex by the modernist architect A. Quincy Jones. As you can see in this aerial view, the complex is situated on a triangular-shaped lot with a unique site placement that allows each unit to have parking access conveniently next to their front door. Each of the units also have an internalized open space that contains the original swimming pool, and it created a community green space that captures the mountain views. You can also see in this aerial view, although it's a little bit small here, that some of the units still maintain the internal atrium, which was an original feature. The request that's before City Council today is to designate this condominium complex as a historic district that contains a total of nine contributing buildings. As required, the applicant has 23 units of the 30 supporting the designation nomination, which was initiated by the HOA of Country Club Estates. One thing to note about this property is that the condominium complex currently is on tribal fee land, which means that any application for historic designation is forwarded to the THPO for recommendations regarding the application for City Council consideration. While the THPO provided some comments related to the actual report and added some clarifying language, they expressed that they did not have any further comments regarding the request for designation. These are images that were included as part of the Historic Resources Report. It's included, which was Exhibit C of your packet. Jones designed condo units in clusters of two and four-unit configurations on the 2.26-acre lot and emphasized the aesthetic that was simple, horizontal, detailed down to the location of the trash bins for each unit. Deep overhangs were another aesthetic function for keeping sun out, and of course, the internalized atriums in each unit brought the indoors, I'm sorry, brought the outdoors inside. The general plan in 1959 also clearly defines the long-range plan for a growing city population and set density parameters around residential development based on this information. In this plan, we see provisions of medium density and demand for apartment and garden apartment-style living. Country Club Estates was constructed during this era of change, but with the intent to promote desert leisure living by providing multifamily housing with amenities. These are some photographs of the property today showcasing the simple yet elegant details that are part of the original design, and the internalized atrium would be considered an interior feature, which typically HSPB does not have purview over, but it is one of those key components of the original design, so it was called out. Similar to the review of the historic sites, a historic district must meet one or more of the criteria listed here on this slide. Staff and HSPB made the findings that the site meets criteria on C and E. It is an exceptional example of the period of his, I'm sorry, period of Palm Springs' planning history and desert modern architecture. The building on the site also retains a strong design tie to the noteworthy architect A. Quincy Jones, who is an influential figure in this region. Overall, all of the buildings on the site meet the integrity findings as part of the designation, design guidelines. This is a differing process, but with districts, design guidelines need to be submitted and adopted to ensure that future alterations or changes will follow the principles of the original design and encourage restoration of important character-defining features which may have previously been altered. Little bit verbose here, but this slide is a list of the different character-defining features that were identified as part of the application for designation. Some of the more significant changes that we see on site are enclosed, original carports, changes to unit entries and security doors being added, but these are all addressed as part of the design guidelines for the condominium, and staff has gone over the draft design guidelines in detail with the applicant team. They are also actively encouraging the restoration of historic features. In conclusion, staff and HSPB find that the site meets the required criteria for historic designation as a historic district as identified in the Palm Springs Historic Preservation Ordinance and recommends City Council adopt Resolution 145 to designate Country Club Estates as historic district number nine. I believe similarly that the applicant, okay, the applicant is joining us remotely. Steve Vought was the one who wrote the report, so if you have any questions for Steve or I, we are available. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff or the applicant? Mayor Potem?
So Steve wrote this entire report?
Steve?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I did.
Excellent. Well, good work. I, you all do such an excellent job on compiling the background of this. No question, just a thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. At this, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. The public's invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. I have two speakers here, Stephen Vought, followed by Stephen Kealan. Are they going to speak in public?
I'm available.
They're listed here as public comment. Are they just available? Okay. So there's no other public comment?
No other speakers.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? No? Councilmember Middleton?
We're all proud of our districts, and this complex is one of the reasons why I'm incredibly proud of the 5th district, and I want to thank all of the homeowners throughout the years for the love that they have given to these homes and to Steve and Steve for their work in bringing it to us today. So I'm going to enthusiastically support this.
I'll second that motion to support.
Yeah, the comments. So I just want to also say, I love these historic designation reports, whether or not we pass them or not, just because they're such great histories of Palm Springs, and the detail is really amazing, and I would encourage the public to read them if they really want to learn. What I found really interesting about this project was that, you know, we didn't, it was apparently, I think only 5% of the city's population lived in multifamily residences, and this really started a whole wave of medium-density buildings in our city, which is kind of interesting because these are now considered some of the most beautiful housing in Palm Springs, and when we hear comments about denser housing and living, it's often accompanied by negative comments, and these are certainly beautiful. And then following this, we had Canyon View Estates and the Royal Hawaiian Estates. So I agree, I enthusiastically support this, and I thank Steve and Steve for the work, and I appreciate, I truly appreciate it. Thank you. Do we have, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Steve and Steve. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Item 3A, which is an approval of three neighborhood traffic calming requests in the amount of $40,000 and authorization to purchase and implement the traffic calming measures. Councilmember Hostage is going to have to recuse on discussing one of them, but I think can stay for the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council, while the item before you this evening is a discussion of three resident-initiated traffic calming projects, we wanted to take this opportunity to give you a little bit more information on the traffic calming process, as many members of the public aren't aware of what the process is. In addition, we also wanted to have Mr. Montalvo and his staff highlight some of the other public safety projects that they have underway and in construction to identify safety improvements for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicular traffic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Montalvo and his team.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Joel Montalvo, city engineer. So what we're going to do here is present the, or basically, we're going to outline what the traffic calming program is, when it started, how long we've been working on it. We're also going to talk about the three projects that are before you for approval. We're going to talk a little bit about the pedestrian master plan, some of the projects we're going to be working on, and then we're going to highlight some of the highway safety improvement program projects that we're working on, essentially our traffic signals. And I thought it best to bring forward, or to have my staff come and talk to you today. They rarely get out to meet City Council or talk to you. They're the ones that are actually working on this day in and day out. Francisco's been working on traffic calming for at least six years. I think since he started, his first project was to do a traffic calming project. And I also have Diana Shea, who is a civil engineer by degree, and she is a project manager with us, so she's the one doing the traffic calming now. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask Francisco Jaime to come up, and he's going to walk you through the traffic calming program that we to walk you through the traffic calming program that we have.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members, my name is Francisco Jaime, principal engineer, and just wanted to take this chance to explain the traffic calming program and sort of go over a typical traffic calming project from start to finish. So the traffic calming program was approved in August 2002, and it sort of, it was created to address neighborhood concerns over traffic safety. It also provides staff and the residents a systematic approach into dealing with these concerns. So the program offers a total of 23 options, broken into two levels. Level one measures, which there are eight options, and level two, which there are 15. Level one measures are the more easier to implement, more cost-effective measures, and generally consist of police enforcement, either in person or with a temporary speed feedback trailer, signage, or road striping, or markers. Level two are more costlier and can alter the road either by speed cushions, chicanes, or pop-out curves, or enhance signage with advanced pedestrian crossing or LED signs. So a typical, the typical requests that come in are for speed cushions, speed feedback signs, speed reduction, and crosswalks. So a typical project starts by a resident submitting a claim either in person, email, phone call, or letter. We then walk that resident through the traffic calming program and process and what it entails, as well as direct him to fill out a community action request form. That community action request form, or CARF, is what staff uses to document support for a measure, not just by one person, but by a group of people within the community, who typically makes up the working group for that traffic calming project. So the working group is the point of contact between city staff and the community at large. So once we receive the community action request form, that is then our cue to conduct the field reconnaissance, collect traffic calming data, and to assess the level one and level two measures requested by the working group. Now here are the typical traffic calming measures requested. So once we have the data needed to assess warrants, we will then set up at a minimum three meetings with the working group, but we'll do as many meetings or phone calls or in-person or online meetings as needed. But the first meeting establishes if the measure was warranted or not. If it wasn't warranted, then we look at another option. If it was warranted, then we proceed to the next step, which is obtaining a letter of approval. Now, though a community may want a traffic calming measure, they may not want it right in front of their property. So there are limited locations where we can install speed cushions, signage, or chicanes or curb popouts. So it's pivotal and vital that we get these sort of letters of approval before we address the community at large with a survey about it. So once we confirm which locations are feasible, we then have another meeting with the work group to go over the survey process and define the study zone. Within that process, we go over what the survey letter will look like, what the ballots will look like. And since each community has its preference of when they may want to go for surveys, sometime, for some, it's better in the summer, for others, it's better in season. So we leave that process or survey open for 30 days. We mail the ballots. We did try at one point to do like online, wasn't too successful, but now we just do mail-in ballots. So we do a minimum of 30 days. If requested, we could extend it an additional 15 days to allow more ballots to come in. But in order for a traffic calming project to make it onto a staff report and present it to the city council, it needs to obtain at least 67% in-favor votes in order to make it on the staff report. So with that, and in the staff report in front of you, Diana Shea will go over the three projects in more detail.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is Diana Shea. I'm a project manager with the Engineering Services, and I am going to give you a summary of the three projects we have before you today. First project is a, in the Sunrise Park neighborhood, and it will be speed feedback signs on the northbound and southbound lanes of Amato Road between North Sunset Way and Cerritos Drive. This process was initiated in March of 2022, and the community action request form was submitted to the city. And following that, we started data collection in April of 2022, and that was to look at warrants for a stop sign, which was requested. The stop sign warrant analysis did not conclude that it was warranted, so we did a second warrant analysis for speed feedback signs in December of 2022. I came on board in July of '23, and in September, we re-initiated with the neighborhood, and we, we started with, at that point, we had, they had already determined that speed feedback signs were the measure. And so we sent letters to the two residents that would be affected by the signs in front of their properties, and we received approval in late September. And then we initiated the overall study area survey, which went out in late September of '23, and we gave them a 30-day window for response and did extend it to 45 days just to get all the votes in. And in November of '23, we received 2/3 vote, affirming that they wanted these. Also, just, I did not summarize, but I wanted to mention that we have currently 40 projects on our files. The three that are before you today are ready and have been approved by the residents. There's another five that are in process now. They're obviously not ready to come before you because we have not reached the point where we've gone out for a community vote. And the remainder, about 32 of them, are either on hold or may have been canceled because they were not feasible. Next slide. The next, I'm sorry. The, the next project is the, in the Takwitz River Estates Warm Sands neighborhood, and it's, it was a request for an always-stop at the intersection of Sunny Dunes and Caye Palo Fiero. There currently, there's not another stop sign, I believe, between Sunrise going down to Palm Canyon. So it's pretty, need a lot of speed there, and there's been a lot of growth in that area as well, just all the antique malls and the bagel, townie bagels. So there was a request from the residents to put in the always-stop, and we did a stop sign warrant analysis, and one of the warrants was met for that, mainly dealing with the visibility at the stop sign coming out of Caye Palo Fiero. And so because the visibility was poor and cars would have to pull out, and that could be an unsafe condition, it is warranted to do an always-stop. So in January of '24, we collected the data, and then we determined that the warrants are met for that. The next project is in the Los Compadres and Sonora Sunrise neighborhood, and that project is also an always-stop with pedestrian crosswalks. And that was initiated originally in May of 2019 from a resident. They requested something be done primarily for the pedestrian safety. They were really concerned with crossing feral and the speeds that are on that street. So in October of 2019, the traffic data was collected and to determine whether it was warranted, but the project later was put on hold. This was around the end of 2019, 2020. We had the COVID, which created some delays, but also they wanted to put it on hold pending the evaluation under the pedestrian master plan that went, started in early 2020 and went through, the public process for that went through 2022. So following that, one of the recommendations in District Four was to, to include a pedestrian crossing and four-way stop in that location. In April of 2023, we received a community action request form from the residents, and we worked on that in, in 2023 and early 2024. We got in touch with the neighborhood. We had representatives from the neighborhood groups to meet together, and we had a lot of support with that. It was widely supported by the attendees on that, and so we have this in front of you
So very exciting stuff, council. You can see that we have these requests before you, but what Diana was really showing you is that we get a lot of requests. They come in weekly, the community wants, you know, one thing or another. They, you know, they request stop signs, they request traffic signals, you know, just a typical crosswalk or, you know, highlighted crosswalks. And each one of those, we have to take in, evaluate, and go through a whole process to be able to get this to completion. So the next thing we're going to talk about is the pedestrian master plan. This pedestrian master plan has been before you several times. We're, we're putting away, or we're budgeting about $1.5 million a year to get the pedestrian master plan completed. I know I've mentioned before that of the 75 individual recommendations of that master plan, 44 have already been completed because we already incorporated them into other projects. And what I really wanted to share with you or wanted to go into is this pedestrian master plan identified two locations where we're going to be doing road reconfiguration. So that's two big projects. This $1.5 million this year, next year, you know, $3 million, that money is going to be used up a lot by the next two projects that we're going to be talking about. So the two main projects is Racket Club. Racket Club from Vista Chino all the way up to west of Palm Canyon. That's a major corridor that, you know, the community has been requesting for quite a while to look at. You know, we finally went through the process of the pedestrian master plan. You know, it was a good candidate, and we're going to move forward with that. You know, council already awarded a design. We're going to start doing community engagement. We had meetings with our consultants. We've met with our, with our PIO, Amy. So we're going to try to start branding it individually. We're going to create a webpage. We're going to start getting community input. We really want to go through this summer, not really starting the community engagement until after summer, so that we can get the community back that may not be here during the summer. So the two projects, essentially the Racket Club project and the South Palm Canyon project are very similar. They're going to go through the exact same process, and the end goal is to make it more pedestrian-friendly, you know, try to include bicycles and other features. I'm going to show two cross-sections in the next two slides. Those cross-sections were part of the proposal. They're not really representative of what's going to happen. They're showing what could happen and things that we could look for. So this one is the Racket Club. It's just showing you, you know, what potentially can be done. There's multiple ways we can reconfigure it, but the ultimate decision's going to be the community, right? Once we get the public engagement, the community is going to tell us what they want and ultimately create a project. So that's those two projects there. So we're just, we just wanted to present that to show that, you know, when we do the traffic calming, there's also other projects they're working on, we're working on to look at the entire city to improve safety. The next projects that I just wanted to briefly mention is our Highway Safety Improvement Program. I know this particular HSIPs have been before, projects have been before council multiple times. So we are actually working on four different cycles. We've completed one cycle, which is 17 signalized intersections, and that, we upgraded traffic signals for safety. So we got $2.8 million from the state for that project. The next one, Cycle Eight, which is currently under construction, we got $2.5 million. For HSIP Cycle Nine, we have $1.7 million, and for Eleven, we have $1.9. So we have about a total of eight, eight and a little bit change in funding from the state to build these traffic signal intersections. So I think our, reaching out, using our consultants to grab money from the state to use it to improve our intersections is part of the entire process that the engineering team is doing to improve safety on our streets. So with that, we're going to conclude our presentation, and we recommend approval of the three traffic calming requests. Thank you. And we're here to answer any questions, and I also have my team here who works on this every day.
Okay. Joel, Francisco, Diana, thank you very much for the great presentation. At this time, we're going to have questions, either general or on the first two projects, but not on the Los Compadres Sonora Sunrise. So any questions or comments on the first two or general? Mayor Protem?
Joel, thank you. When we talk about warrant analysis and we reviewed the steps, the approval process and the criteria that's, that we follow with the neighborhoods when we are trying to determine what calming measure gets put in place, what's involved in the warrant analysis, and how is it different for each level of calming? You know, so the crosswalk, the flashing LED light, the stop sign versus a traffic signal?
Yeah, so the traffic signal is very specific, right? The recommendations, the warrant analysis come from the Caltrans, the Department of Transportation. It's very specific as to what would warrant a stop sign and a traffic signal. So those warrants are in a completely different level than anything below that that's traffic calming. So for the traffic calming, I would ask Francisco to see what he goes, what process he uses with the community to engage to find out which one of those pieces is more appropriate at, in each location, right? Certain areas are narrow where you can't put a speed bump. So Francisco, what's the process for the individual traffic calming procedures that? So I don't know if we want to call it a warrant for those. We just, it's more of an analysis. The warrant really that you have to meet are for stop signs and traffic signals.
Okay.
Right. For stop signs, you know, and traffic signals, we use the MTCD for stop signs as section 2B.
The California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Yes. So we'll go through there, and within there, there's certain criteria. It could be the intersection turning counts, the speed, the road configuration, are the curbs developed, not developed? If it's for speed cushions, is the speed limit 30 miles per hour or less? Anything greater, speed cushions are not, are not warranted.
So why wouldn't we just change the speed limit?
It would have to go through a process to check if the speed limit could be reduced. Now, it's not always guaranteed that the 85th percentile will coincide with the lowering the speed limit, and I believe there were certain assembly bills that were passed recently a year or two ago that did allow further reduction of speed from like typical five, say if it's at 43 miles per hour, we could go to 40. I think the new assembly bill allows us to go an additional five miles per hour or less if, if required. And then if we deem something as a safety corridor, I think there's potential to lower it even further. So there's a lot of review and process to see if the speed reduction can happen, but if the speed is, if the 85th percentile ends up being higher, then we may have to raise the speed limit on that street as well.
Who dictates the, the analysis criteria?
So the state requires you between five to 10 years to reevaluate your entire city into a speed analysis. We just completed one maybe a year or two ago, right? So we've, we've gone to the city, hired a consultant, they evaluated every single street in our city, recommended where the speed can be lowered and where it has to be raised. And it's really not up to us, it's up to the actual study that determines how we raise It's up to the actual study that determines how we raise it.
Yeah, and state guidelines and requirements.
Yeah, so we go through a whole process. And we don't, it'd be very infeasible to try to go do a speed study for every single street if somebody complained and wanted the speed lowered, right? Because as Francisco said, if we do do a study and it turns out that the actual speed limit should be higher, we're obligated to increase the speed limit, not reduce it.
That takes care of my curiosity there. Thank you. So what you talked about, somebody talked about part of the process, the approval process, is we send surveys out via email. I mean, regular US mail. What address are those surveys sent to?
Look in the Parcel Explorer on our, is it Nexus? And we'll, so we'll define the study zone as to what would be most impacted by the measure that's going in. We will then pull those addresses, both the physical location and, but in the event that the owner lives not in the area, we also will pull that address as well.
And what is the, is there a measure of how many? There's 67% in favor allows the project to go forward. But how many ballots, is there a measure that we use that we expect a certain number of ballots to come back?
Yeah, so that comes from the study zone. So in that study zone, we might determine, say, I think it was South River Side Drive, where I think there was like 18 properties. So there, we need two-thirds.
About two-thirds.
Correct.
So it's not just 67% in favor. You just need a two-thirds vote or two-thirds ballots returned?
Two-thirds in favor from the entire study zone. And that just provides us an overwhelming support to move forward. In the past, I believe it used to be like 51%, but there was a lot of challenges. And in a few, and I think in a few cases in 2018, there was a request to remove certain measures.
And how many do we normally get back though? Do we get like 90%, 70% of the ballots back?
We do get 67% typically. But in the event where it's close enough, we'll also will state that in the staff report saying it may not have reached 67%, but maybe there was a 60% goal reach. And this is after a lot of boots on the ground, door knocking by the working group, really putting in the effort. So we would document that in the staff report to let you know that, hey, they got close, potentially close enough.
Yeah, excellent. So I've been using wrong language. When did a speed bump become a speed hump? And when did a speed hump become a cushion?
So the rubberized speed cushions is what we install in the city. Those are typically seven foot wide in direction of travel and encompass the length short of the gutter on the street. A speed hump is more in a bump, what you'll probably see like in a parking lot. So the speed cushion or speed tables are the more elongated ones you'll see throughout the city streets.
And how do we determine, part of the analysis, how do we determine what public safety, how public safety feels about hump, cushion, or bump? You know, like fire departments?
We do check with the fire department. They've actually approved our design. A lot of fire departments do not like the cushions, right? It slows them down. But we've actually been able to work with them to design it so that they can pass through it very comfortably. So we don't just go do it without reaching out to our partners. We really work with them. And I just want to touch a little bit about the actual process. It is not perfect. I think it's been around for a while. Francisco took it over. We've tried to refine it. We're fixing it. We're trying to do, you know, every time we experience some, something that's challenging, we try to refine the process. It's a living document and we're trying to make it better. One thing to get across here, it's, it's five people that request this, this particular thing in their neighborhood. And that, those five people can occupy staff's time significantly, right? So it's a really big effort on our part. We try to work with them and maybe have the working group do a lot of the work. But when we get people being challenged, that they don't want it, then it becomes, you know, we're not just having two meetings, we're having five, we're having 10, we're having 20 meetings. And it becomes, you know, just, it takes up a lot of staff time. We have, I said, I guess 40 or 50 active. Three came forward. So you can see how people don't agree with each other. And it becomes very difficult for us to actually implement these traffic calming devices, right? We want to do it. We want to help the community, but it's challenging. And I think moving forward, we want to try to maybe improve the process. Maybe take some of the, you know, resident traffic engineer and bring it back to the professional engineers that we have here in-house to try to make better decisions and move projects forward. That way, we can do more and help the community. But there's always going to be opposition and we're always trying to make the process better.
Yeah, that's great. I think you guys, you're doing a great job. And Diana and Francisco, you know, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Councilman McHulstage.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your work on this. Very much appreciate it. So I just had some follow-up questions about the process, if I can, following up on Mayor Protem. And I'm sorry if you did this at the beginning, but just, we get these questions all the time. Like this is one of the number one questions we get. And what I've learned in almost seven years is it's extremely bureaucratic too and complicated for you all to follow the law about assessing whether it's a stop sign warranted or, you know, each of the categories. People don't understand we can't wave a magic wand. And just like street paving, right? We have a very detailed process. And it sounds like state law, you know, ties our hands and sets what's required. So can you just go through the categories? Because I'm trying to figure out what is council and ordinance set, right? The process itself versus like what state law and federal law that you have to do for road engineering? So you said for a, just for the public to understand, the process is if they want to request anything, they fill out this form on your website. It's easily available. There's a lot of information on the city's engineering website. I've directed probably 50 people to that website over the last seven years. But can you just explain, so when is a stop sign warranted? When are the other traffic calming measures warranted? When is a light up, you know, crosswalk warranted? When is the speed sign warranted? Just like very clearly, what's the?
So I don't know if I have all that in my head to try to bring it back out. I don't know if Francisco has that in his head either. What I will say, and Francisco, you can probably, he does have a lot of knowledge that he could probably try to describe those warrants. But the real important warrants are a traffic signal and a stop sign. A stop sign is never used to slow down traffic, right? A stop sign in the wrong location can actually be very detrimental and lead to death and accidents. So we take traffic signals and stop signs very seriously. Those are the ones that we fight, not fight the most, but we really analyze the most. And it goes through a set process through the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, right? The traffic signals and stop signs, we don't negotiate with anybody. We say it is or it isn't. And no matter how many times people come to you, we will hold our ground there because we are liable, right? We don't want the city to get sued.
You've told me no many times, yes.
So I will, and I will tell everybody no. And same for traffic. So those are two that, obviously those are. And when we have a stop sign that is warranted, we bring it to you. And we say, this has followed the process. Here's a resolution. Please approve it. And we are then all protected. Beyond that, then it goes into the community action request forms and the guidelines that we have. Everything below that is more of a guideline that follows. And those are, do meet certain criteria for the state. But those are, those can, you know, are a little bit easier or less stringent, if you will.
Right.
And I want to kind of leave it at that unless you, I mean, I could have.
I don't need the actual standards of how many cars per X, just for the public to understand. It's highly complicated about the data. But also from a policy perspective, because I share my colleagues' concerns about, well, what I assumed from your question, not to speak for you. But it's very burdensome. It's burdensome on staff. You know, it's, it can be a long process from a request. And it just seems like a lot of bureaucracy, not at your fault, but just, you know, a lot of process for getting something that maybe council may have control over versus like having a lot of state law about what data is required. Does that make sense?
Sure it does, yeah. So below a traffic signal, traffic calming, really where we get into trouble, not trouble, where it takes a long time is the community itself doesn't agree on what they want. You can present them 15, 16 different things that could be done. And they don't really tend to agree on what's beneficial, right? A speed hump, for example, is one of the most, you know, the highest level of traffic calming that you could put out there. And if you would put that in areas where people are going fast, people would slow down. But there is a tremendous amount of people that do not want them in front of their homes.
But why are we voting on safety measures that are required or that an engineer determines are required for safety?
I guess the thing is, these are voluntary requests from the community. These, we as engineers are not going around the city and inputting traffic calming devices. These are requests and the council set forth guidelines for these requests. The city engineering department is not going to go through the entire city trying to slow down traffic. We do that with our speed studies. So when we do our speed studies, we set our speed limits. That's the level of protection that we have for the city. Beyond that, anything else? Those are requests from the community.
I just am for my colleagues thinking to get to a place where it is less driven by requests or complaint and more on, and that's why we did the pedestrian safety master plan and working from like master plan documents. Because I think it, I agree with you. It would be great to have more city engineer focus. Because for us as sitting up here, right? It's if we invest X amount for this type of protective measure and we know it will be protective and you tell us that, not that it's going to be worse, versus like the liability at an intersection, right? Those are, these are really great investments that we're making to protect people's health and safety. And they're really important. So I want to make sure that we're looking at them like that, especially as we're deciding instead of having it, you know, mostly complaint-driven or mostly, you know, the requests, which is a good model, but I agree is very intensive for staff time and not maybe the best practice.
Right, and for the pedestrian master plan, we are implementing those. We are not asking permission from anyone. I mean, we do come to council, right, for approval. But the other requests, those are, those are more to slow traffic down because the community feels that cars are speeding. The speed limit may be appropriate for residential area. But because the community feels that cars cut across there, they want us to implement some sort of device to slow traffic down a little bit.
Right.
The speed limit is still safe per the studies that we do. But some people don't tend to adhere to the speed limit. So then the traffic calming devices are what we would use to help the community.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that because you just had an instance on Francis Drive, I think, by Vista Del Monte, where they were trying to do the speed humps. And the car, they went, the community went through the whole process and they didn't get enough ballots back?
That's correct.
Diana, I think Diana has the detail on that.
I probably have the most detail on that. That was a pretty complex one. We did get to the place where we sent the, we sent it out to the entire study area. It was rather large. And we did not get enough, we didn't get 67% response. But of the response we got, it was almost split 50/50 between people who wanted it or didn't want it. So.
And this is for speed bumps on the, on the street by the school?
Yeah, there were four. We had, and it took us a long time
I know.
to find the four locations where the owners were willing to allow it.
And how broad was the area of the people voting?
There was about 140 residents because a lot of people have to go over those speed bumps, cushions to get home, to drive every day.
This is where I agree with, I think what Councilwoman McHulstage was saying. These are speed bump, humps, speed humps, I think they are.
Cushions.
Cushions, whatever. By a school, this is not something that people should, I mean, this is something that the city should be able to say as a public safety measure, we want, isn't?
So that's where I kept on mentioning that this community action request form and the document that we have can change. So because we do experience difficulty and if, if the community, a good portion of the community wants it and it makes sense, i.e. a school, then I think there should be a process where we can just come to council and say, we're going to install speed humps here. Council, you approve it and we move forward with it, right? The way we do it is we do want community input. And if the community, as you see, is split, then we have to abide by what the community wants, right? In this situation, they, neither one can determine if it's a good thing or a bad thing. So we will work on that and it will get better. And I think Scott wanted us to, the city manager wanted us to look at the process because I've described the difficulties we've had in certain areas where we spend an inordinate amount of time and money and the community still does not agree. And we're dragged into these conversations and battles that we don't want to be part of anymore. So I think we will bring something back where if you allow us to, give us more power to do things and.
We, I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead. That's where I was going.
We definitely need it because I can tell you in this case that Diana was talking about, the neighbors are going to go through the whole process again and be another six, eight months, I don't know, of community outreach and work and ballots and everything and knocking on doors. So it is an incredible, incredible use of staff time and frustration for the neighbors. And this seems like a case where there should be a way the city could, council could say, this is speed humps by a school. We believe it's a public safety measure. And we know it's an inconvenience, but it seems like the process is flawed. Anyway, that was my comment. Councilwoman Middleton, I know you've been waiting. And then Councilwoman Garner, I saw, I'm sorry.
I've got a couple of questions. And then when it's appropriate, I've definitely got some comments to make as well. So I'll start with the questions right now. The two-thirds requirement, is that statutory by something that we've done here, either at the city, council, or by the state of California?
I think for the traffic calming, it's just the manual that we created here internally.
So it's something that you've created?
Yes, that the city created. It's existed since 2002. So we inherited it and we're making it better.
All right, so then we can change it as members of the council if we decide that we want a different standard.
Yep.
All right, and you can change it if you think it needs to be changed.
Yep.
All right. Second question. The when you take and make a determination that calming is, oh, excuse me. I've lost my train of thought. I apologize. One PS, to what extent do you take advantage of one PS in trying to help you work through the process of determining what the neighborhoods want?
So on that, as far as the traffic calming program, not only do we establish a working group, but we also reach out to the neighborhood lead. We use, or we coordinate with Denise Goolsbee, who is heavily tied with her. So that's part of the process as well.
I'd really encourage emphasizing that as to try to streamline some of this back and forth. And so those are my questions. When it's time, I have some comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Garner, did you have questions?
I don't have questions, I only have comments.
Mayor Protem, one more question.
Joel, where is the, what budget is the $40,000 come from?
That's 500,000 traffic calming that we have. I've set aside about 500,000.
But in your budget, there's a line item for traffic calming?
Yeah, I created a traffic calming and, yeah, so pedestrian master plan line item. So, yeah, we have the money to implement these.
And you're programming 500,000 a year for calming?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was mostly at the council request. At one of our budget sessions, I think I was asked to increase it and I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question. You mentioned that you had 75 projects identified?
Correct, so the pedestrian master plan, I think there was 36 locations. But when you broke it down, it ended up being like 77 or 76 individual action items.
And how, and 40-something of those are completed?
Forty-four have been closed, either incorporated into an HSIP project or Highway Safety Improvement Project. Perhaps it was simple enough to issue as a work order in coordination with their street department. Or maybe at the end of the day, it just wasn't found feasible. Maybe there's a development that's going to be going in to install that improvement anyways. Or it's on tribal land where we might not be able to say, do a sidewalk gap closure for a number of years.
And does that include the ones that have been requested by the community or is that separate?
No, those are completely separate. So one is a pedestrian master plan that studied, a consultant, SCAG gave us the money to do. We paid a consultant and we finished the product, the project. And they created a booklet and gave us these areas that we could improve. Of those areas, we've done most, almost more than half of them. And some of the bigger ones are like the racket club reconfiguration that we're working on. So that's aside, and I, you know, I know we presented them all together, but the traffic calming is a separate category.
So the question from the, the question from the community, there's only eight of those left plus another 32 on hold.
Yeah, those are on hold because the community hasn't agreed. They've just decided that we're going to do it and we, they don't get consensus, so.
Okay. So if there's any other questions or comments in general or on the first two on the agenda, we can do that. On the third one, Councilwoman McHulstage has to leave. Councilwoman Garner.
I would really love to see this come forward to make the necessary changes. I think you're hearing it from council, but I want to formally state that it makes sense to have this be staff-driven, safety-driven. Obviously, we want information from residents to come forward to point out spaces that need this assistance, but at the end of the day, the experts on this should be the ones that are, are really evaluating and making it, moving it forward. As we heard in public comment, we need to ensure that the safety measures are implemented expeditiously. We don't need to have a bunch of discussion when we know from a safety level, from a staff level, that something needs to be implemented. I think there's a question in terms of whether or not something is a nice to have, but not necessarily necessary, maybe that's a different level, but I don't want us to wait this long simply because there's disagreement on something that we actually need.
I just wanted to add that in addition to us evaluating, say, like the speed study every five to 10 years or five to seven years, we also look at heat maps, both pedestrian, bicycle and vehicle accidents. So a lot of times, once we enact the mitigation, perhaps through a highway safety improvement where we're changing out to audio push buttons, countdown heads, protected left turns, you'll see that those areas will go from red to more, you know, downgrading in safety severity and perhaps something else will pop up. So we also look at that in addition to traffic calming, in addition to any other studies done like the pedestrian.
Thank you, Councilmember Garner. I think the point is taken and I think when we bring it back, we're also going to want the ability to say no, right? There are certain areas where things just do not make sense just because one person wants it and they, they pose a picture that, you know, the world's falling. I want the ability to say, no, there's nothing wrong here and let's move on.
Please say no. As a city, we have to say no more.
I, I think you have strong support that we also want to expedite, not just to make these things happen, but to save your staff time so you can actually work instead of a lot of, lot of community interaction for things that may be necessary, but a lot of times are just very time consuming. Councilmember Middleton?
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Just a few comments. Let me start by saying thank you and I know how hard you work at this and we really appreciate. The process for determining whether we're going to move forward is something that I think we need to streamline and make a much simpler and easier process for everyone to understand. The number of individuals that are going to come forward to us asking for traffic calming measures is only going to increase. We have more pedestrians, we have more bicycles out there and we have roadways where people are speeding. And I really appreciate that the chief has emphasized that traffic safety and enforcement is going to be a priority moving forward, but it, we do not have enough traffic officers out there giving tickets to people who are speeding. And some of those speeds that we are seeing on our roadways are absolutely atrocious and there's just not officers there. And as professional traffic engineers, you have to also be cognizant of the fact that frequently individuals are not following the law. And you may have designed a road for 35, but 50 miles an hour and more is being driven on that road and the public is experiencing that. And since I have spent an awful lot of time in this area, I'm not a professional engineer, but what I do know is that for many, many decades, all of the emphasis was how do we move automobiles more quickly from one place to another without taking a much more wholesome approach to traffic safety that includes the pedestrian, the bicyclist and others? And some of the pushback we're seeing from the community comes because they don't feel that their views have been taken into account. When you're rendering a professional judgment, that is your professional judgment. But if what is being said is we may be able to do this or we may not be able to do this and we're trying to gauge whether or not the public supports something, that's a political decision. That's what we get paid to take and do is to resolve those questions where this group of people wants something to happen and this group of people does not want something to happen. If you tell us it's illegal, that's one question, but if you tell us both are legal, then you've really told us you need, you city council need to be making those decisions as to which direction we're going to go forward. And in our best judgment, here's what seems to be the views of the neighborhoods. So I encourage you to spend reasonable time, but don't wrap yourself up in, in months and months and months of trying to resolve a dispute that perhaps you should be kicking to the five of us to make a decision. So with that, last thing, we need to slow traffic down and there is going to continue to be efforts to take and do it. And as all of you know, I'm going to work my tail off to make sure those speeds get lower every single place we can do and do everything I can to make sure the chief has every traffic officer we can get to go out there and pull people over when they're putting residents and visitors of this city at risk. Thank you.
Well, we all agree, so your, your request for $40,000 turned into, you're going to get a lot more for that. Is there any other questions or discussions? I think we can now vote with you recusing. Do you have to leave?
We can take a motion to support the first two items, which I'll make, to move staff's approval, recommendation to approve, and then we can recuse, I can recuse on the next item that you took separately just for the public. I live within 200, 500 yards, much, much less than one of the intersections for the third item, although state law does not require me to recuse, our city rules do for where I live. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's why I'll be recusing. But for this item, I'll, for the first two items in the staff report, I'll move to approve. Or you have motions already? Okay.
Okay, motion passes 5-0. Do we need a separate vote for the third one?
Yes, with Councilmember Holstich, go on.
So I move staff recommendation for item three?
Item three, I second it. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mayor Protem DeHart.
Yes.
Mayor Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This item has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda, two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. The first speaker is Abraham Ishak.
After revisiting the October 12 resolution, I realize just how carefully worded it is, but today, let's focus on three sections. The mayor and Middleton both claim that the support of Israel does not include the government. Okay. Does it include the Israeli settlers who terrorize Palestinian villages and spit on Palestinians as they walk by? Does it include them? The mayor insists that this resolution is to express Israel's right to exist. Okay. Does that mean it includes the Israeli Defense Forces? Their primary purpose is to defend the sovereignty of the state, yet they've killed over 35,000 civilians, including hostages and aid workers, confirming that the IDF targets civilians. Does it include them? Does it include the protesters who wage sit-ins blocking humanitarian trucks from entering Gaza? Does it include them? Does it include the families of the hostages who are protesting against their own country? Does it include them? Well then, who does it include? And why is it stated that it is not a moment for any party hostile to Israel to exploit these attacks? Isn't it Israel's actions that have often been hostile to innocent civilians, including the hostages and their families? It's crucial to acknowledge the full context of the situation and not overlook the impact of Israel's policies and actions on the lives of Palestinians, also known as apartheid. And why isn't a one-state or two-state solution expressly stated instead of including this hollow gesture of the Palestinian aspirations? Why aren't we demanding that Israel support the aspirations of the Palestinian people? If we truly support justice and freedom for both Israelis and Palestinians, then why, then we must condemn Israel's actions that undermine the possibility of a two-state solution. How can there be a viable Palestinian state when Israel continues to steal Palestinian land? There's no land left to call a state. Ask yourself this, would Israel be okay with a one-state solution where every human being is equal? Would you support that? From what I have learned about each one of you, you wouldn't support that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay. The next item is city council and city manager request for upcoming agenda development. City manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think, oh, it's popped up there, it's not on my, there it is. So at our next regular council meeting, I just want to point out, we are going to have a fairly significant presentation by airport master plan, all the airside alternatives, and we'll be bringing back our annual fiscal year single audit report. We'll be talking about both of those items. I do want to mention on the 23rd, we do have a couple more historic designation reports in addition to the Attician property that we'll bring back and you don't see it here, but we'll add that to the agenda along with Palm Springs disposal charges, another public hearing. And we're also going to be bringing Lift Arises talk to us about, coming to talk about some of their action planning that they do. I did want to point out on June 17th, we've talked to council members about a special joint meeting for all of our boards and commissions and appreciation dinner. I think we've looked at all of your calendars and it's getting really tough to find a date in the month of June, but this looks pretty good. It's a chance to recognize all of our commission members with an appreciation dinner at the convention center and I believe part of what occurs at that is short presentations by each of the commissions about their, their work. So we'll be working with all of our commissions about that. And then one final comment, I wanted to take just a quick minute. Mr. Mayor, I know you were very, very involved in the procurement and vendor fare that we had on April 17th at the convention center. I think we had 600 or 700 people from around the Coachella Valley. All the cities participated. I wanted to give a special shout out to our procurement director, Kim Baker, did it, and her entire team really, did a tremendous amount of work on that. All, every city in the Coachella Valley participated and it's something we want to grow and make bigger each year and it was very well received. So thank you, Mayor, for some of your comments that you made and everybody else's participation on it. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I would like to reiterate my congratulations to Kim Baker, who did a really excellent job on this project and got all nine cities and another five agencies, including the county, to be working on it. And there's a billion dollars worth of contracts in our valley that we want to keep local. So I would also ask just on the comment you made about the joint meeting with boards and commissions, that if they do the presentation, we give some general guidelines so that they're all somewhat similar or follow, so that they're cohesive and in sync. I just have a couple more comments and then I'll pass it on if that's okay. The boards and commissions applications, the due date is on April 30th is the end date they'll close, so I encourage the public to go on and apply if you're interested. I think we have about 30-plus positions open that will be done. I also wanted to congratulate our Parks and Rec on the three awards they got at the California Nevada Festivals and Events Association Convention, which was terrific. And I think I have no others. I know Councilmember Garner is going last. Does anybody else have any comments? Mayor, Councilmember Middleton?
Actually, I've got a question on upcoming agenda. Scott, we, this is a two-year budget and we're in the second year. Are you anticipating that we will be able to finalize the budget at the June 13 meeting or are we going to need both the 13th and the 27th to finalize?
Councilmember, terrific question. We were talking about that today. It'll be the continuation budget, the second year of our two-year budget. We don't think it's going to be, you, you've already in effect approved the second year with escalator clauses in it, but there will undoubtedly be a few tweaks and changes to it. I know there's a few unfunded mandates from the state where we've had to adjust and do some other things, but we'll, we'll be bringing that back to council. We're planning on two meetings for that, so introduction and then a follow-up meeting, so.
All right, thank you.
We'll have to do that during the month of, of June, no later than that.
Right. Mayor Protem?
And Scott, just a reminder, I am, we've talked about it, but the public hasn't, isn't aware, but Councilmember Middleton asked that the roundabout project come back to city council for the specific purpose of, of putting an end to that project. When, when do we expect that to come forward?
Yes, Mayor Protem, it doesn't show up on here because we anticipate it'll come back as just a consent item. It'll be, it'll be a very brief report based on council's direction to us. That project, of course, is not funded. It doesn't have any funding. Council's pretty clearly said you'd prefer not to move forward with the project at this time, possibly looking at maybe some other projects in a smaller intersection, an easier intersection, that sort of thing. So that'll be coming back on the consent agenda, I believe on the 23rd. And it'll be a very simple report and we don't plan to move forward with any more work on it.
Excellent. Just for the community to get an update, I appreciate that. The other one is, we've, we've talked about in the past and I'm curious as to timing, on when we will have the tree trimming policy coming back specifically with regard to our palm trees?
We will be coming back with that in, I think, two or three meetings to bring back some direction on what it would take to modify the way we do some trimming of some of the trees and of course mitigate against any sort of life safety issues with palm fronds falling down and that sort of thing. So I think you'll see a report from us on that, you know, in the next, in the next few, two, three council, council meetings.
Yeah, that's perfect. I, I just want to make sure that the community is, is kept up to speed as to, things are moving forward.
Yes.
It's not something that we're forgetting about. So thank you.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few, I have an item to request for upcoming agenda items and they're related to commissions. So we get a lot of requests from our commissions, that our commissions need a lot more support from us. I think there's some questions about clarity of role, like what the job of the commission is and what the job of a commissioner is too. City council, we're able to work very closely with the city attorney and the city manager and, you know, the head of, you know, all these department heads, which is truly amazing. And I think commissioners get a lot less of that support. And so just thinking through what options we may be able to give to commissioners. This city council passed a few years ago a code of conduct for city council because we had some issues with city council behavior and it seems like there's no code of conduct for commissioners and it also seems like there might be no clear way to remove commissioners if we know of like violations of the law or the Brown or the Brown Act or something like that. So I'd like to request if council supports an item to come back with options for council to consider, to give more guidance for commissioner behavior, a code of conduct, or additional items just to support the commission.
I support that.
I support that.
Thank you.
Three, three people to bring it back to the agenda.
Yeah, just to bring it back.
So, I mean, it's not a...
Counsel, could you, a little direction maybe on how quickly you'd like that to get back, what, what your thoughts are about that?
Do you have a, how long it might take? We have a council conduct ordinance that I worked on that might be somewhat simple to move over and adjust, or even have it applied to commissioners. I would like a clear removal process, since it seems like, obviously, commissions and commissioners sit at the pleasure of city council, so that's this age, this body, but it's difficult sometimes to bring those back, and I know their personnel matters, they're not personnel, but it's, it's nice to have a clear process for commissioners to understand and council to understand.
Yeah, I think we could have that back by May 9th.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, thank you. One of the items that I've asked for, and I think is being, going to be held at some point, is to have representatives from Riverside County Transportation Commission come to council to make a presentation on the traffic relief plan that has been put together by the commission. The time period for that plan has been completed, so they'll be presenting what is being proposed. The funding to be able to achieve all of the things that are in the plan, and that is an extremely long plan that I'm not going to try to go through, will require additional taxes, and there will be a vote coming up, I believe it is at the May 8th Transportation Commission meeting, as to whether or not to place on the ballot in November an initiative to increase sales tax in the county by 1%. And I would remind all of my colleagues that in addition to all of the numerous good projects that are a part of that traffic relief plan, is one very near and dear to all of our hearts, and that is additional funding for the Coachella Valley rail project.
Counsel member, or council members, on that particular point, I can tell you that the RCTC has been going, made these presentations to many cities in Riverside County. I know four or five already they've been to here in the Coachella Valley, so it sounds to me like it'd be, the wishes of council, we'll work with them to, I know they've already contacted us to do a short 15-minute presentation. I'm looking at our calendar here. I don't know if we, they can be here on the 9th. I'd like to try and avoid the 23rd if we can, it's starting to, you know, things, or maybe possibly June 13th. So we'll coordinate that with them.
Thank you. Besides Councilmember Garner, is there any other comments? So I'm just going to mention our next meeting is held Thursday, May 9th, 2024, at 5:30 PM, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Garner to close out the meeting.
Thank you very much. We're closing this meeting today in honor of Tony Brugmans. On Sunday, April 21st, Tony Brugmans passed away peacefully surrounded by family. Tony lived a beautiful, adventure-filled life. He was born in Belgium and lived and worked all over the world. He was the cook for an Antarctic exhibition, the GM of hotels in Hawaii, Bangladesh, Tahiti, Micronesia, Singapore, Indonesia, and South Africa. And in 1999, he returned to Palm Springs as the general manager of the beloved family restaurant, La Valeries. In his last 25 years in Palm Springs, he served on the boards of the Palm Springs Hospitality Association, Hospitality Industry Business Council, Palm Springs Restaurant Association, and Visit Greater Palm Springs. He was the founder of the Greater Palm Springs Wedding Association, and in 2001, he created and founded the Best of the Best Golden Palm Awards to honor front and back of house workers in the hospitality industry. He had a deep love of hospitality and Palm Springs. His dedication to the industry and this city will never be forgotten. However, it is his deep kindness, generosity, and many stories of his adventures that will be missed the most. He is survived by his two siblings, Paul and Christian, his wife Joanne, his three wonderful daughters, Teri, Dominique, and Lauren, and his grandson, Zach. I was honored to know him and be loved by him. He always introduced me as his fourth daughter, even when I was the mayor. He treated everyone as family. I am thankful for his immense contributions to our city, but I am most thankful that he expanded my family and gave me my best friend. We will miss him deeply, and will celebrate him this Monday, April 29th, at 3 PM at the Palm Springs Hilton, and we hope to see you there. Thank you. And with that, we will close our meeting.